Here.
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 All right, well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Open it up right now for public comment if anybody out here has anything to talk about other than what's on the agenda. Seeing no one, let's move right on. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the October Commission meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Minutes have been accepted. We have someone here to present for twenty-seven forty Meeting House Road subdivision.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, this is Mike Seoco with, I'm with Catania Engineering Associates, five-twenty West McDavid Boulevard in Milmott Park, PA. I have the resident notices if
That's fine. Thank you very much.
So I'll do a brief overview of the project. We do have reviews from the alternate engineer in Delaware County Planning Department and your zoning officer, all of whom recommended approval of this plan. So this plan is a simple lot line change. The site is located, it's two properties, it's located, one is on twenty-seven forty Meeting House Road, the other one is thirty-one hundred Upland Road. The site's zoned R-two residential. We meet all zoning requirements to do this lot line change. And basically, the property on Upland Avenue, which is on like the northeastern side of the, of the plan you're looking at, they want to transfer over the existing barn, which we carved out into about a half acre piece of property that will be conveyed over to the Meeting House Road house that's on the southeast side of the, of the plan that's shown there. So there's no new development proposed with this. We're really just, just changing the lot line from the Upland Avenue house from having the barn to the Meeting House Road house now having the barn. We provide all the required setbacks, we provide riparian buffer for this in accordance with the codes. And that, that's kind of the, the long and short of it. Again, no developments proposed with this. I have comments here from your alternate engineer, Kelly Engineers. They only had four comments and really zoning, they just note that no, no variances are required by the applicant or requested by the applicant. And the VRR subdivision lot line change appears to meet all applicable zoning requirements. He has two general comments, one is that the applicant should submit a legal description for both parcels for review and approval, which we will do assuming we're successful here tonight. And then also, once the plans and associated legal descriptions are approved, that we provide verification to the township that these items were recorded, Delaware County Recorder of These. So no plan changes are required with this, it's really just some paperwork to close this out. Like I said, after we get through the subdivision process with the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, we do have a review from your zoning officer saying that these parcels meet the bulk area regulations of the R-two residential zoning district. But he has no objection there. And Delaware County Planning Commission, basically, they make a recommendation of approval of this plan as well. So unless the Planning Commission has any questions, we'd like to request a recommendation for approval tonight.
Okay, thank you. Let me open it up, the questions from the the board. Cindy, nothing? Greg? Cindy, there was a question about a setback that he's looking for.
Yeah, this, this document here, which is dated October thirteenth, there was one item about an existing, one existing non-conformity, front yard setback associated with parcel A.
It's existing, it's existing non-conforming and your, your ordinance allows for that to be continued as long as there's no expansion of that non-conformity? We're not doing any expansion of the non-conformity.
Well, that's all I, I saw in here, so otherwise I have nothing further.
Yeah? I personally have no questions.
Thank you.
So questions to the board is, should we approve, not approve, recommendation? Need a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of this plan.
Second.
We'll take a voice vote. Cindy?
Aye. In favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, have a nice night.
Okay, thank you. Presentation for thirty thirty-three Market Street.
Good evening, Joel Commando with Inland Design. We were before you last month with this project. And at that meeting, we discussed the, the wetlands that were found in the northeast corner of the site. Since that meeting, we did submit the wetlands report that was formalized from Vortex Environmental along with this plan that's being displayed in which we have revised the requested setback. We had come in last month with a request for a ten-foot setback. And through discussion with the Planning Commission, we have revised that request to a twenty-five foot setback. And in addition, have added some additional plantings along that riparian area. The remainder of that area is existing wooded areas. So with that revision, there's no longer a need for the waiver requests that we came in previously. The twenty-five foot reduction to the setback is allowable as approved by the municipality under ordinance section four ninety twenty-four B one B one. We've not received any comments in response to this yet from any of the consultants. But we're here to present this and get feedback from you. And hopefully we'd like to move this project forward.
Okay, Alex, I'd like to get your involvement here. Where are we with the other strenuous little issues that were going on? This looks like this is pretty well cleared up.
Well, unfortunately
With respect to setbacks.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I would have to disagree with the setback requirement. I had to read the ordinance and have some discussions with DEP. But basically, in twenty twenty-two, all of the municipalities in Delaware County have adopted a new stormwater management ordinance, which was, again, basically required per the MS-four that is now taking over with that stormwater management requirement for the municipalities to enforce. So just a little background back a few years back when the county and the state were trying to improve water quality in the state, they, they passed a Act one sixty-seven state mandate law that was requiring that the counties do stream studies and then prepare stormwater management regulations every five years for the municipalities to be able to enforce. And that started to dwindle because of funding sources from the state and county to be able to enforce that. And then since then, the, the state has put together a requirement where the municipalities have to do their own water quality for the municipality and enforce stormwater management, and that's under the MS-four program. And they've now pushed the requirement of the stormwater management ordinance in a five-year cycle through that program. And like I said, in twenty twenty-two, the stormwater management ordinance was adopted as required by, by state. So I wasn't really, unfortunately, well, well-versed at our last meeting as far as what the latest regulations stated. But the section four ninety twenty-four, part A, is the initial criteria that says that the applicant shall create a riparian buffer extending a minimum of fifty feet to either side of top of bank, channel, lake, or wetland. What they're reading as section B under item one, which basically B is an exceptions for that fifty-foot criteria, the regulations got stricter where they've now stated that the following provisions that are applying to riparian buffers, buffers on lots in existence at the time of the adoption of this chapter. So they have since the previous stormwater ordinance, it appears that they've tweaked the language and now they're basically saying that lots in existence. And this lot is a proposed lot, it's not in existence right now. The sixteen-acre lot isn't existing, but that proposed lot one of the two lots that they're subdividing is not an existing lot. So unfortunately, the ordinance does not give them the capability of using a twenty-five foot setback as an exception. Had that been an existing lot, and then they came in and tried to put the building, we would have been able to follow section four ninety twenty-four B one. So modification slash waiver would be required for the new ordinance. And as I was researching the latest twenty twenty-two stormwater ordinance, it appears that they've also added a new section called waivers. And basically, the four ninety eleven B has a section that talks about if there's, are waivers or modifications of the requirements of this chapter may be approved by the municipality if enforcement will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question. In my years of experience with these type of definitions and, and discussions and, and requirements, a hardship is when, again, if that was an existing lot and the developer's trying to develop an existing lot, he could possibly argue that the lot is only X amount of acres and based on the square footage and what I'm trying to construct, I have a hardship. But that would be if he could argue that statement from the standpoint of, again, right, what I've, what I've experienced over years that the municipalities basically will argue that, you know, you can develop it, but doesn't necessarily mean you, you can develop that particular size of a building and parking lot because of the fact that if you make the decision to make the footprint and parking lot of a certain size, that's putting that setback criteria issue with, again, it's, it's like the argument is you've created your own hardship, basically. So you can't really use the hardship case if they're creating it. It goes further on to say that a modification may be considered if an alternative standard or approach will provide an equal or better achievement of the purpose of this chapter. And then it says that the request should also provide the facts on which the request is based on these provisions. So I think at this point, we would need for them to first prove that they're not creating a hardship. And then if we accept that concept, then they would have to then try to provide the facts that would somehow justify that they believe a twenty-five foot buffer that they're, riparian buffer that they're trying to create would be equal or better than what a fifty-foot riparian buffer would be. But I don't, the way I'm reading it, I, I think they first have to try to prove that they are not creating their own hardship. So at this point, I unfortunately do not believe we have the flexibility yet of what we have had prior to the twenty twenty-two ordinance. So again, I apologize for not realizing that they made some tweaks to the ordinance, but we're, the latest ordinance has those conditions.
And so your, your position is that four ninety twenty-four one, I guess B one is saying that the exemptions are only on lots?
Yes, it says the following provisions also apply to riparian buffers on lots in existence at the time of adoption of this chapter. So, and that, and that I believe is, is very recent language because I think in the past, I think it used to say in the past that was for residential lots or something like that, but now they just flat out called it for any lot in existence at the time. So unfortunately, this is not an existing lot at this time.
All right, if I'm going to put that back into Charlie language, what I'm hearing essentially is that under your interpretation of, of the rules as far as the county is concerned and as adopted by township or required by the township, a waiver still would be required should we look at this project as compared to what we thought that by moving this back twenty-five feet, we would be okay and a waiver would not be required? That's, is that essentially breaking it down?
Yeah, I believe the old ordinance may have allowed that twenty-five foot section, but now the new ordinance from twenty twenty-two unfortunately has taken that away.
So again, interpreting as I think I hear it, you're, you're going to need to request some form of waiver and/or come up with a reasonable explanation as to why this is an acceptable plan in, in lieu of what's required.
I hear that, we'll have to consult with our legal team and make sure of the interpretation. And I guess we'll come back appropriately with that.
Okay. Absolutely.
Yeah, so just to be clear with the
Just identify yourself for the purposes of the record.
I'm Max Ryan for nine six six test people. So just to be clear with the record, I think this plan was changed, resubmitted and reflects the changes that were requested at the last meeting. Would everyone agree that that's correct? Alex?
I don't believe you, I don't believe the planning commission requested a twenty-five foot section. I thought that when Joel was mentioning a ten-foot riparian buffer initially, and then I think somebody at the planning commission said, no, couldn't you at least give us twenty-five? I don't think it was more like we requested a twenty-five foot. I just, I, I thought planning commission, right, I mean.
No, I, I didn't mention anything about a buffer.
Well, to be, to be clear, I don't want to get into
Who said what?
Exact verbiage.
It's in the minutes who said what, but we can read back through that.
It was certainly suggested to us by several members of the planning commission that if we were able to achieve the twenty-five, they thought that was reasonable. Again, I may not be getting the wording exact, but that was conveyed not as a directive, but as an opinion from several of the members who were, who were present.
And I think, again, I believe that opinion that they were discussing was based on your claim that ten-foot buffer would be acceptable per the ordinance, but unfortunately, it's not ten-foot. It is a fifty-foot. So I, I think what everybody was discussing at the previous month was not based on, on the correct information, unfortunately.
Well, that's clear. And again, we could look back at the, at the minutes to see exactly what was said. My sense was that I wasn't convinced that a waiver wasn't necessary, but that a twenty-five foot buffer would probably be more reasonable than a ten-foot buffer, that's what was running through my head. And now with this new information about what the statute actually means and what the act actually says, it makes that a moot point, actually, other than for a request for a waiver.
I agree with this. You're right, that, you might be stating correctly. You're right, that you might be stating correctly. It's just frustrating coming. And I, I've got my team to travel. They want to have a meeting. And then, you know.
I, I would agree 100% if, if that were every case that we looked at. But the bottom line is when we go to the planning commission, our job is to try to work through all the weeds and try to come up with a plan that will pass muster at the end of the day. And ours is only a recommendation. So had the this information not materialize until it got to the board, the board would still be stuck. I mean, the board of commissioners, it would still be stuck with saying, hey, we can't do this. And then I would feel bad because we didn't do our job to discover before that happened. Yeah. Yes. No argument. Now beyond this, do we have anything else that we haven't been able to resolve in between? I mean, there's probably some approvals we haven't received or whatnot. Need, going to need that.
There's been nothing forthcoming on the traffic other than a statement that the sketch reference in the PennDOT letter may not exist.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who's, who is that? Who is that saying that?
Matt Hammond.
He's not here tonight.
It was discussed as an open issue at the last meeting. And yes, there are still concerns as were expressed at the last meeting that the township has consistently been looking for full access via the traffic signal when this site was redeveloped. We had the meeting with PennDOT when it was discussed. We've had certain representations and it is still not clearly presented what hardships are preventing full access from the traffic signal. We've heard things that are based primarily on the layout of this site, that if we want to develop the building with this footprint in this location, there are these issues that preclude us from doing that. We have not seen an exhibit illustrating this. This has been asked for several times. This was asked for last month. I reached out to Matt yesterday, several projects, briefly touched on this one. And that's it. My expectation is, you know, we haven't seen and it may not exist. So somehow something was presented to PennDOT that was not presented to the township that led PennDOT to a conclusion that was then presented to this planning commission that was relied upon. And we're asking to tie this all together and there seems to be some missing aspects of it. And if that was not relayed to you, that that was still an open issue from the last meeting, I apologize. I don't know why I would apologize, but I think someone should have relayed to you that that was still a concern.
Again, I think, I think from our perspective, and this was, we discussed this at the last meeting. This was discussed extensively at the March 23 preliminary hearing. When, I mean, you can go back and look through the minutes of that meeting. The entrance was discussed extensively at that time. We were referencing the March 21 review letter from Catania Engineering, which specifically references the design that is currently the case with the one-way in at the intersection, the one-way out to the south. It has no comments indicating that there's any issue with that design. This board approved that preliminary design, which then allowed, you know, Alliance to move forward into final plans into the PennDOT HOP permit. So it is, you know, honestly, it is shocking to us that this is now coming up as an issue again. You know, it then, it then went to the board of commissioners, was approved at the 413 meeting. During all of that time, we never received any comments from any of the township consultants raising any concerns about this until this final plan submission. It's just, it's mind-blowing and this goes back to what Max was saying earlier. If, if these comments are not brought up in a timely manner, how can we possibly address them?
So what, what I find shocking is several months after the fact, the level of discussions that did not involve the township about that, about the access, that there were conversations directly with PennDOT that we were not involved with. That there were certain, my understanding is there were certain representations made.
If I remember correctly from that meeting, we approved with a condition that PennDOT, you know, approve it, which from what I understand, we're, we want, and correct me if I'm wrong, we want to see what PennDOT received. The township wants to see what PennDOT received to approve that. They wanted to be involved in that. Am I correct on that?
Yes. I mean, again, from as best we can piece together from what we were told, this was accepted by PennDOT predicated upon this layout of this development, which at the time this was happening was the only approval the township had granted. That was the zoning approval for the driveway that was supposed to be up by the Royal Farms. So again, we asked last month for this information. It is being represented to us that maybe it doesn't exist. So yeah, there, there's a concern.
Max, I'm also going to just, so you can maybe see where we were coming from from the municipality side on this is that the municipal planning code does not grant the municipality the right to hold up a project because of a third-party slash PennDOT HOP approval. So we all felt, looking at this, like, like, like they mentioned, we felt that we wanted the full access drive and we also had the impression that PennDOT was going to pretty much require that same condition. And so at that point, in the spirit of helping to be, you know, following the, you know, the requirement, we weren't going to use a driveway, which is a PennDOT permit, not a municipal street, it's a state road, to try to hold up the project because there's no basis that you, you are allowed to, you can get to eventually at some point to final approval, but it'll be subject to still a PennDOT permit at some point before recording. But the municipality still at that point can't just say, I, I can't give you preliminary or final because you didn't get your HOP permit. It's, it's a condition of it. So I, I believe if, when we had these discussions earlier, we kind of all felt like, I, I remember the, the members at that end were basically saying like, why can't you give us a full access driveway? And then we had some discussions where we said, well, I don't think PennDOT is going to allow that. But most of the other parts of the site is pretty well covered yet, stormwater management, grading and everything else was fine. So we thought, you know, how do you try to hold it up? So we, we gave you the conditional preliminary because there was a PennDOT permit out there still. And then I think what Al's saying is that somehow PennDOT was getting on board with this one-way in, one-way out based on, I guess, the town not being part of that review process. So.
The majority of, as best I can tell, the issue is because the driveway is here, that we have the sightline issues, we have some of those concerns in getting in here. If the driveway was here, you'd be able to get full access, but for reasons that have not been clearly explained to us other than this is the building we want. You put it here, you could get full access. So what are the constraints that prevent?
From my position right here, I have expressed concerns about the placement of the Southern Rose driveway from the beginning. And I've, I've mentioned that you move it closer to the apex of that road, you're creating a dangerous situation. I live over there, I drive that every day. And so for, for your associate there to say that no concern had been raised, yes, they were. I raised them from this chair. As soon as I saw the design of that driveway, I saw a problem and I raised that concern.
To be clear, you are absolutely correct. I've heard you raise that concern consistently and we've been aware of your concern on that issue. That is true.
Well, let, let me just again offer some kind of understanding, at least from my perspective where I sit. Almost every single plan that we have looked at in the last six, five, six years that was predicated on having a highway permit as part of the conditions of finalizing the plan. As a board, we have sat here and said, quote unquote, we're okay with this, with these exceptions, and that is that you received that permit. All right. What I'm hearing here, and Al, you can correct me if I'm not misinterpreting what I'm hearing you say, is that when we first looked at this in the preliminary, there was still some discussion with respect to whether we had a two-way street or one-way street, one in, two out, whatever. Was it going to be at the traffic light? Was there going to be something else? When we were at the preliminary stage, my recollection was that wasn't resolved. It was still a moving target. Now I could be wrong because I'm going strictly by recollection now.
Conceptually.
Well, here we are again, we're, we're, conceptually. My problem is Al's trying to point out that the township would like to have input into PennDOT in having this. That's not going to change the facts. If PennDOT, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, PennDOT says this plan is approved. Township doesn't have any redress here as far as I can tell. I could be wrong, but I don't, I don't think I am.
It's an open question on what, on what the township's redress is. Typically, PennDOT is supposed to take the township's wills into consideration. And sometimes they do more than others. You know, if, if you recall, and you know, as we went through the last meeting, the access to this has been a moving target. There have been, and tried to tell you right up front, if you're worried about the timing, because it needs the left turn lane in. And the reason it makes sense to do it at the light is because you've already got the turn lane there. But it took us three submissions to even get this far. That initially you were trying to do, God, I forget the first one. Then you tried to move the driveway up too close to the Royal Farms. And instead of complying with the study requirement to look at it, moved with that and went to the coordination with PennDOT. I appreciate what you're saying about the procedures. I don't think, but I mean, we've had, every time we've looked at a site here and we've had people, we had the sketch plan not that long ago that came in, we've told them full access. So I, I appreciate your position that you don't believe it's an issue because of the approvals you've been granted and we'll move forward.
May I ask why there were no comments on the driveway? If, if this is an ongoing issue that go along with that Catania engineering letter from March 21, 2023, that's.
The letter that describes what the driveway is and doesn't say we don't like it.
Correct.
I should have consulted further with Alex to make that more explicit. I frankly presumed at that point that it was known that we wanted the full access there.
If I can quote from that letter, first traffic comment, please call out the intersection driveway on the site plan as a one-way in only as recommended in the traffic study. That's, that's the comment, which we then did. That the preliminary plan was approved conditional upon that letter. Direction in that letter was that it would be a one-way in and a one-way out, which was what was shown and is what was then submitted as a preliminary plan and submitted to PennDOT.
And following that, we learned about some of this other coordination that has brought into question how we got to this point. So I understand you want to keep going back to that letter and you. No, no. If you had provided, if you had, when we first pointed that out back in the original one and just done it then. So I mean, don't, don't, you know, you're, 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 you've been hopscotching with the access through this entire process. Don't believe anybody's said anything about retracting your preliminary approval. I think there are still questions about the access and how we got there. By the way, do we have a tenant yet? So the building can change in shape and location within that site? Well, I understand that. But that actually didn't answer the question. Can the building shape be changed?
Was that we received the letter from PennDOT indicating that they had approved, preliminarily approved the HOP permit that you had submitted for this access driveway and that goes in line with what the approval was, that you were given the conditional approval, that you could, you know, get the approval through PennDOT. In that letter from PennDOT, there was indication that there was a plan and in this plan, it proved.
And in this plan, it proved that there was no, there was no possible way for a full access intersection. So the ask at last month's planning commission meeting by the traffic consultant was for the township to be provided with a copy of the plan that was submitted to PennDOT so we could see how PennDOT got that decision because the planning commission here gave a conditional approval based off of acquiring the PennDOT HOP approval. And then you had a conditional approval on your, your plan for your preliminary plan. So I believe that from an outstanding items perspective at the last planning commission, they, they request, the, the traffic consultant requested to see a copy of that plan, and that has not been satisfied. It was also indicated to us at that meeting that you guys would actually be coming here in December, which would have probably gave enough time for that plan to be, you know, given over to the township and any kind of review. However, you hear tonight, which is fine. You know, again, you know, there's timelines, you have abilities to do that. But from the traffic consultant's perspective and our perspective, we would still like to see a copy of that plan that was submitted to PennDOT that gave, that showed them that this was what needed to be done, that they.
All right, well, we just heard from the township manager. And we have the buffer issue that needs to be resolved. One way or the other, either we're going to have to ask for a waiver or you're going to have to address it in one way or another. So we're still at a, at a point where we don't have enough information to recommend it going forward. And we think the best thing at this point would be for you guys to go back and shuffle the deck again and, and see where, where we are and do a little more coordination with the township.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda is other information, and we'll start with Cindy. If you have anything you'd like to offer?
No, I don't.
Mr. Gregg?
No, not at this time.
Joseph? Okay, the only other thing I'd like to offer is I'm still not getting any notes from anybody about meetings so that we can recapture something less than our total transcript as her, as a an aid to help us with our year-end report writing and whatnot. Something that would be nice to have. Okay? Other than I have nothing else, have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.